I believe in the risen one. I believe my open heart by the power of his blood. Amen, amen. I'm alive, I'm alive because he is. Amen, amen. Let my songs join the one that never ends because he lives.
I was dead in the grave. I was covered in sin and shame.
I learned to sing all my pain. He rolled the stone away. Amen, amen. I'm alive, I'm alive because he lives. Amen, amen. Let my songs join the one that never ends because he lives. Life is a sorrow because he lives. Where is he who is gone? I know he holds my life, my future in his hands. Amen, amen. I'm alive, I'm alive because he lives. Amen, amen. Let my songs join the one that never ends. Amen, amen. I'm alive, I'm alive because he lives. Amen, amen. Let my songs join the one that never ends because he lives. Because he lives. Because he lives.
Good evening, friends, and welcome to this called Annual Conference session. We are here today for the purpose of ratifying the disaffiliations of churches under paragraph 2553 of the United Methodist Book of Discipline. We also are here to wish each other the best as we take different paths forward. My prayer is that each of the churches represented on this call grows increasingly effective in making disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. The Holston Conference will miss the congregations that are disaffiliating today from the United Methodist Church. At the same time, we rejoice with the churches that are continuing on the journey together as United Methodist. The leadership team and I look forward to moving into the future with the 540-plus continuing United Methodist churches of the Holston Conference as we continue to focus on discipleship. As we do so, new disciples will come to know Jesus Christ. Existing Christians will grow in faith and ministry. More and more leaders will be discovered, developed, and employed, and the world will become a better place. In that spirit, Reverend Robert Karaoke will lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Almighty God, thank you for each one gathered here today. We begin this worship service as Holston Conference United Methodist. When we conclude, some on this call will be in another denomination or in another independent church. We pray that you will continue to work through those withdrawing and those continuing to be United Methodist Church. We request that you pour your Holy Spirit on each one of us as we lead and serve. We ask that we become increasingly effective in making disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. All of this we pray in the name of the one we serve, Jesus Christ, our resurrected Savior. Amen and amen.
You are now invited to join your hearts in worship with Michael Rogers and the Cokesbury Choir. If you're so moved, feel free to join your voices too.
Our first order of business is setting the bar of the annual conference. Bishop and members of the annual conference, I move that the bar of the conference be designated as including those members who access the live stream of the conference using the Zoom webinar platform, using credentials provided by the annual conference executive planning team, as well as those participating on-site from our broadcast location at the Holston Conference Center. Before we vote to set the bar, I will provide some information about voting and the Zoom webinar platform that we will be using today. Voting during this annual conference session will be conducted electronically, so please take a moment to ensure that you have an Internet-connected device available to use for voting. If at any time you have technical issues with the voting website, please call or text Technical Support at 478-245-4042. This number is shown on the screen and will be posted throughout the evening in the chat window of the Zoom webinar platform. If you do not have your voter ID, please call the Holston Tech Support at 865-202-6350. Please use the Q&amp;A function on the Zoom webinar platform to ask specific questions. If you have questions that do not require the attention of the entire conference, such as questions about where to find information, how to use parliamentary procedure, our agenda, or any similar item, we invite you to use the Q&amp;A function of the Zoom webinar platform. A team of moderators will be monitoring those questions and helping connect you with whatever resources you need. If you wish to be recognized during the conference, please log into the Voting and Speaker Recognition System at holston.gntvmedia.com and enter the voter ID you received prior to today's annual conference session. From the main screen, click Get Recognized and complete the form. Please be aware that when asking to be recognized, in some cases, the bishop may read your request rather than calling on you to speak to the conference. Additionally, there may be some circumstances where your submission is not recognized, such as if you are one of several people seconding a motion, or if you make a motion or request that is out of order. If you are unclear as to why your request to be recognized has not been specifically addressed, please use the Q&amp;A feature so that our moderators can respond to you. If you are asked to speak to the conference, the bishop will ask you to use the Raise Hand button, which will allow us to identify you and allow your microphone to be enabled. If you raise your hand without first being asked to do so by the bishop, you will not be recognized. Again, if you need technical support, please call or text 478-245-4042.
We will now take our vote on setting the bar of the conference. A majority is required to pass. Please take out your smartphone, tablet, or other voting device, or open a new tab in your web browser, and go to the link that appears in the chat. Once you have loaded the page, please type in your voter ID and click the blue Submit button. I declare this ballot open. If you have already entered your voter ID, please click the green Load Ballot button to be able to vote. Please make your choice and click the blue Submit Vote button to receive confirmation that your vote has been recorded. Again, a majority is required to pass. I declare this ballot closed. We will view our results in just a moment. As soon as the results come in, we will hear the announcement. So here are the results. We had 328 votes, 327 voted yes, and one voted no. That's a 99.70% affirmative, so the bar has been set. And now at this time, our conference lay leader, Becky Hall, will read our Scripture passage from Psalm 46.
I'm reading this from the Common English Bible Version. "God is on refuge and strength, a help always near in times of great trouble. That's why we won't be afraid when the world falls apart, when the mountains crumble into the center of the sea, when its waters roar and rage, when the mountains shake because of its surging winds. There is a river who streams gladden God's city, the holiest dwelling of the most high. God is in that city; it will never crumble. God will help it when morning dawns. Nations roar, kingdoms crumble. God utters his voice; the world melts. The Lord of heavenly forces is with us; the God of Jacob is our place of safety. Come, see the Lord's deeds, what devastation he has imposed on the earth, bringing wars to an end in every corner of the world, breaking the throne and shattering the spear, burning chariots with fire. That's enough. Now know that I am God; I am exalted among all nations; I am exalted throughout the world. The Lord of heavenly forces is with us; the God of Jacob is our place of safety. This is the word of God for the people of God. Thanks be to God."
And now I invite the conference chancellor, Mr. Mike Eastridge, and the dean of the cabinet, Reverend Kim Goddard, to share about the process that has been followed by churches. This will be followed by the president of our Conference Board of Trustees, Mr. David McLean, who will present the disaffiliation resolutions that are properly before us today.
Thank you, Bishop, and good evening. As most of you know, the process for disaffiliation is found in the Book of Discipline, Section 2553. But because of the consequential nature of our vote tonight, and because this is, by definition, the extension of the 2023 Annual Conference, I want to give just a very brief context so that everyone is aware of exactly what you'll be doing as you vote this evening. As many of you know, 2019, the last time the General Conference met, there was a discussion of this continuing issue of how we deal with the ordination of clergy and those who are practicing homosexuals. And so there are two events that took place at General Conference that are pertinent to tonight. The first is the prohibition on the ordination of practicing self-avowed homosexuals was reinforced and it was made stronger. The second thing that was done was that Section 2553 was established to give a limited and unique way of churches to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church if they were aggrieved by that decision. Earlier this year, in April 22 of this year, we held an annual conference for the purpose of ratifying the disaffiliation agreements of those churches who followed the disaffiliation process established by 2553. Importantly, what happens in 2553 is that a church that has decided that it wants to take the process of disaffiliation has a vote, at which time two-thirds of the congregation agrees to proceed with the disaffiliation process. If that vote succeeds, then each church was obligated under 2553 to pay their portion of the unfunded pension liability, as well as two years of their apportement to help ease the process of disaffiliation. In addition to that, the process is that the Board of Trustees of Holston Conference, who have the authority to make the terms and conditions for disaffiliation, established that each church would go through the 90-day discernment process before taking that vote. What's important about that is that on April 22, when those churches that fulfilled the obligations under the Holston Conference disaffiliation process had a vote on the ratification of those disaffiliation agreements, there were some churches that did not meet all of those requirements in a timely manner. there were some churches that did not meet all of those requirements in a timely manner. They began the process in a timely manner so that they would be eligible to disaffiliate, but for whatever reason, they were not able to. Following that special session of annual conference, the Board of Trustees, in their commitment to have a fair and grace-filled process for continued disaffiliation, changed the terms and conditions of the disaffiliation process to allow those churches who began the process in time to have been able to have their disaffiliation agreements ratified at the April 22 conference a second chance to disaffiliate. So that's why we're here this evening, to look at the ratification agreements of those churches who started the process in time to have disaffiliated it on April 22, but did not meet all of the requirements at that time. So this evening, when the motion is made before you, what you are voting on is to ratify the agreements of those churches who have a second chance to disaffiliate because they were not able to at the first special session of annual conference on April 22. Now I invite Kim Goddard, Dean of the Cabinet, to discuss things further.
The district superintendents affirm that the 15 churches listed on the screen have completed all the requirements for disaffiliation from the United Methodist Church under the authority of paragraph 2553 of the Book of Discipline.
I'm David McLean, Board of Trustees. We deem this report to be properly before the annual conference, and the remainder of the report containing the names of the churches which have completed the requirements for disaffiliation are presented for ratification by this body of the Holston Conference. We recommend the ratification of their disaffiliation agreements by this body.
Thank you. The report is properly before us, and we are now ready to vote to ratify this report. It requires a majority vote. Please take out your smartphone, tablet, or other voting device, or open a new tab in your web browser and go to the link that appears in the chat. Once you've loaded the page, please type in your voter ID and click the blue Submit button. I declare this ballot open. If you've already entered your voter ID, please click the green Load Ballot button to be able to vote. And now please make your choice and click the blue Submit Vote button to receive confirmation that your vote has been recorded. Again, a majority is required to pass. Please begin now. I declare this ballot closed. We will view our results in just a moment. So here are the results. There were 348 persons voting, 333 voted yes, 15 voted no. This has been approved by 95.69%. So the report has been approved, and these churches are disaffiliated from the United Methodist Church. The actual disaffiliation date for churches whose disaffiliation agreements were ratified this evening will be September 21, 2023. The deeds releasing the United Methodist trust interest in the church property will be executed and distributed to these churches as soon after the 21st as possible. And now Belinda Kinney, who is a member of our Holston Invitation Team, will lead us in a responsive prayer to express gratitude for our shared history and ministry and bless one another in our different paths forward. We invite you to join in this prayer from wherever you are participating in this evening's virtual conference.
The church family is a family united by the common recognition of Jesus Christ as our Savior. We are all siblings in Christ, and for a time, the United Methodist Church has had a role in all our spiritual formation and mission. Like every human family, our church family is formed and reformed over time. Members are born and they die. Members join and they depart. Churches form and they change. Relationships shift. For a time, all the churches represented in this room have lived and served together in the Holston Conference of the United Methodist Church. We have shared our victories and our failures, our joys and our sorrows. We have carried burdens together. Together, we have known God's grace. Together, we have laughed and cried. Together, we have worshipped and served God. Together, we have lived. We feel lost in this separation, yet we feel hope for our different paths forward. We will miss each other's contributions to the church family. While we know we will all continue to add to God's church universal, we trust that in the power of the Holy Spirit, we will continue to do good work through us in the communities we serve. We ask God's blessing on each other and on the whole family of God.
Let us join our hearts in a unison prayer together that you see on the screen. Oh God, you are the strength and protector of your people. We humbly place in your hands all the congregations represented here, those who go forward as United Methodists and those who go forward into different denominational families. Guide and help each one, O Lord, in inward healing and an outward mission through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. And now please stand wherever you are as you are able to receive the benediction. May you all go forward in the love of God, the peace of Jesus Christ, and the comfort of the Holy Spirit. May your gratitude and your prayers continue for one another as members of God's holy church, serving God's beloved world. Amen.